Is cable channel on, Janice? Janice?
Janice doesn't. Juniper's doing it.
Juniper's doing it. Oh. Sorry, I'm sorry. Got the wrong director. Okay, we're ready to roll. All right, let's roll. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome.
Mark, I just emailed it to you, to your Gmail address.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for September 1st, 2020. The first item on our agenda is public input on non-agenda items. I understand there are none of those, so we will proceed to item two, which is the approval of the Select Board Minutes from August 18th, 2020. Any comments on the minutes from the board members? Allison?
My only comment was that I think the "ask" in pause should be capitalized as well because it's part of the acronym, I think. My one little town vote.
Okay. Any other comments?
Actually, Bob, you should know, right?
In pause?
I'm just joking.
No, I don't know.
I think you're correct, Allison. I think it's capitalized.
Yes, all right. That was Taylor.
I was.
Anyway, do I have a motion to accept the minutes with that one correction?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, discussion, roll call, vote? Allison?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna? Jenna?
You're on mute, Jenna.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, aye. Five zero. Thank you very much. On our consent agenda tonight, we only have one item, which is the approval of the application of Molly O'Rourke doing business as Betty Forever at 46 Elm Street for a Vittler license. Are there any objections to this item on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, the item is hereby adopted. The fourth item we have is a public hearing on three matters. The public hearings are for the benefit of the public to give the Select Board some input on any of the matters at hand. Obviously, given the fact that we have had no public input on these three items, I will close the public discussion and revert to Select Board decisions on these three items. The first of which is Caleb LeChance doing business as The Jack at 43 Mechanic Street for the renewal Class A Restaurant Lounge Liquor License. The second item is Matthew Haskell doing business as Blaze Camden, formerly Hoxville/Curafuto, at 5 Bayview Street for a renewal Class A Restaurant Lounge Liquor License. And third is Revita Inc. doing business as Long Grain at 20 Washington Street for a renewal Class One Restaurant Liquor License. We can take them as a block, or if anybody wants to take them individually, that's up to the Select Board. Janice?
That Matt, he's...
Okay, okay, okay.
The liquor license for Hoxville.
Okay, well, let's just take the first. Yeah, that's fine. One second, Matt. Let's take Caleb LeChance DBA to The Jack. Do I have a motion or any discussions with the Select Board?
I'll make a motion that we okay the liquor license for Caleb LeChance DBA to The Jack at 43 Mechanic Street for our renewal Class A Restaurant Lounge Liquor License.
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? Roll call, vote? Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob, aye. Five zero. Now, for the second matter, we will reopen the public discussion on this matter, which would be Matthew Haskell doing business as Blaze Camden, formerly Hoxville/Curafuto. Matt, would you like to make a couple of comments to the Select Board?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm also Matt, Matt Morgan, Matt Haskell. Matt Haskell's the owner. Last month, I'm at my controller's, I'm working with him. Basically, the property was Hoxville/Curafuto, and they've rebranded it to be Blaze Camden, similar to Blaze Bangor and Blaze Aurora. Other than that, it's basically the same facility, and we're just trying to get our license renewed.
Perfect. Well, thank you for showing up, Matt Morgan. Not Matt Haskell, Matt Morgan. Got it?
Yeah, everyone's Matt.
It's great. Wow, he looks different.
Yeah.
I got a monitor for that one, Matty.
Well, with that, I'll close the public discussion on this matter and revert to the Select Board. Select Board, have any questions or motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve liquor license for Class A Restaurant Lounge Liquor License for Matthew Haskell DBA Blaze, formerly Hoxville/Curafuto, at 5 Bayview Street. Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote? Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob, aye. Five zero. The last item would be for Revita Inc. doing business as Long Grain. Again, I don't think there's anybody here from the public on that one, so we will close public discussion and revert to Select Board decision on Revita. Do I have a motion or questions? Mark?
I'll make a motion that we okay the liquor license for Revita doing DBA Long Grain at 20 Washington Street for a renewal Class One Restaurant Liquor License.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote? Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, aye. Five zero. Thank you very much. We will close the public hearing and go on to item number five, which are two action items for approval. They're both related to the snowball. The first of which is for the discussion and approval of the FY '21 Snowball Budget. Let me pull that up, just so I can see it. There it is. Bottom line, Audra, do you want to introduce what you all done, and Beth?
Yes, so I'll just generally explain it, and then any specific questions, turn it over to Beth. So, the last time that we looked at this budget, there were a few changes suggested by the Select Board. One was to take out the purchase of the new groomer from both scenarios. And then the second request that you had for us was to prepare the budget with a scenario that took into account a lot of the challenges that we're facing due to COVID-19, with some particularly pessimistic projections around revenues and certain scenarios that a lot of us really hope don't come to pass, but it's smart for us to plan for. So, one of them was, what if day ticket sales are lower because of issues such as not being able to open the lodge? And things like rental revenues lessen, revenues being down. Also, looking at a season where we don't have the significant revenue that we usually enjoy from toboggan nationals. So, the budget was prepared with those two scenarios. So, scenario one, very much like, and that can be seen in the department head version of the budget. So, excluding the groomer, everything else is sort of like a standard, typical season. And then scenario two, which is reflected under the town manager version of the budget, is that pessimistic, sort of lower revenue projections. So, that's just sort of high level what we're looking at. Any specific questions? Beth and Jody can answer them.
Do you want to take revenue first and then expenses? Is that what you like to do?
Sure, yes.
It's up to you. That's fine. We can just take chunks of them. So, basically, you're right, there was... Let's see, there was... Each item was taken down a little bit, is what it looks like to me. And the toboggan fest was taken down from $80,000 to $70,000 for income. But there's no projection here that suggests, I thought I heard you say, "No toboggan fest." There's no purpose in putting that in now, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Select Board comments? Mark? Mark, you're muted. Mark, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. One comment I want to make is actually about the sound. The conversation that you and Audra are having sounds like we're eavesdropping. Wherever the mic is located, it's far enough away, it's sounding like you're in the back of the room hearing. It's really hard to understand. We're going to need you to sneak up.
I agree. I just changed all my audio settings, right, as far as I possibly could.
Yeah. It came to be out of this circumstance.
Well, if we speak directly to the mic, does that help, Mark?
That helps.
Yeah, the pickup is here. Thanks for reminding us. We'll try to direct, not that way, we'll direct this way. That will help a lot. Thank you. But any comments on the revenue portion of this model, of this budget? Okay.
I mean, I... My comments would sort of just be overall, that I found it challenging. I know we can't figure out exactly what's going to happen or anything, but looking at the... I guess I was hoping that there might be a little bit more correlation between the things that were said in the reopening documents with what the budget says. It's just a little bit hard for me to figure out what the thinking is here. Like, under this scenario, it might be really bad. I don't know. I just, I'm having, I don't know how to articulate it properly, but I am in a little bit of trouble. Maybe I could maybe just add more narrative.
Sure. Beth, you want to address that in general terms, please?
Sure. So, a lot of our expenses are upfront. So, before the people can come to the snowball, we're making snow, preparing the mountain, things like that. So, unless that's not going to happen, it wasn't, it was a pretty conservative budget as it was. So, that's why it looks the way it looks.
Oh, and I guess I'm not suggesting that you need to try to make it more conservative. I don't really think that's, my personal opinion is that, so if the community wants, I think we should be trying to make a go of it and do our best. But more just, how do we plan for maybe freeing up, being proactive without a special town meeting, or Select Board contingency? Or what do we think the worst case, like the, that my worst case scenario is? Or what do we do? What is it? How much of a disaster is it if we really shut down halfway through? I guess maybe I would prefer to talk about the reopening plan a little bit first, and then how discussing the reopening plan document would make it easier for me to make comments on the budget, I guess.
Well, the reopening plan doesn't address what would happen if it gets shut down. That's a legitimate question you asked about what the potential exposure could be if, in fact, there were, oh, worst-case scenario, resurrection of COVID shutdown, for example. That would be the absolute worst scenario that could occur. None of us has any window on that, but in those scenarios, that can be a really significant loss because you would lose toboggan nationals, which contributes $50,000 or $30,000. It's down a little bit in your projection to about $40,000 to the bottom line. But worse than that, you wind up with, we have staff that are full-time and would still be accruing expenses against the snowball. I think our snowball, and Jody, you can correct me more accurately, I think our normal weekly payroll, the snowball's probably around $23,000, $25,000. A lot of that doesn't go away. So, if that were to occur, we could wind up with significant six-digit losses this year in the snowball, if that's the worst-case scenario.
Right. I guess what I'm wondering, though, is, so in like the school's reopening plan, for example, they say kind of clearly, if the state goes to yellow, this is what we're going to do. If the state goes to red, this is what we're going to do. And it seems like we should decide a little bit ahead of time about kind of which one, which triggers we want to agree on ahead of time. It's like, this is what would shut down the snowball? Or are we going to go try to keep going as long as we're not shut down by the state? Is that the... And I'm not saying I have a set opinion about any of these things, but I don't want it to turn in later to sort of this arguing back and forth of like, well, stop the desk, and the Select Board wants to weigh in on this.
Yep.
Just sort of like what the, what their thinking is in terms of what they would think would be the best decision, what would be Select Board vision, what's the state? It's hard to read all the details of the budget without thinking through a little bit more. Like what Beth says, providing some of these details about, okay, some of this stuff, we just can't change course halfway through. There isn't an option. We're going to, oh, let's just cut half the staff at some point at the snowball. There's no scenario really where, I guess we can enter a lesson program or something, but... So, it's just, I mean, I guess it's just helpful for me to hear Beth talk about how we're going to decide whether to take a better approach, or a little bit more to talk about the reopening plan.
Well, I guess the excellent points, I have the same concern. Just to be clear, the opening plan that we have in our packet is for opening. There are no contingency plans. What you're, I hear you're discussing, Allison, is what are our contingency plans for scenario A, B, or C to occur? And I agree with that because, but I think that's something we don't have right now. And I'm not sure if town staff has that prepared yet or not.
I have a few thoughts when I can jump in.
Sure, Taylor.
So, the, though, I was happy with the reopening plan as it stands now. To me, it strikes me as a jumping off point, knowing that it's September 1st, and it's possible, I think, to have a perfectly fleshed-out, fully-blacked, big plan, knowing that the ski season really is three months away. A lot to change between now and then. But I think the reopening plan hardly takes into account, you know, the maximum of 15 people in the lodge, a ton of time, lots of outdoor space, eating space outdoors, distance between people, queueing in the lift lines. It addressed a lot of what I was concerned about, what really is messaging to the public, that we've thought about these things, and that the snowball will be a safe place to recreate this winter. In terms of, in terms of, I think what Allison's getting to, like, what are our benchmarks for bad and worst-case scenarios? I guess in my mind, I've always sort of thought that we would go by whatever the state guidelines are for group settings, like anywhere else. I'm open to discussion on that, but I, in the back of my mind, I always planned that if this, as long as the state is allowing, if any, like, snowball operate, that we would do so unless there were some enforcement standards that specifically affects this area and or this snowball.
Right.
Jumping parallel to the budget, the, from a general sense, Mike tells me that I want to be more conservative with the snowball budget this year, you know, having a go of it, being open as long as possible, having a regular season, and being really careful at the same time. Because I think that the snowball price, you know, a lot of uncertainty. Definitely said, it surprises, it can be a great year where everybody wants to be outside, wants to be in the snowball. I'd rather plan for the worst in terms of the budget, and be less than a surprise coming out ahead. So, I was happy with what the town managers' recommendation on the budget looks like. To me, it seems like the biggest cuts that are made are in the Alpine lines, Alpine expenses and Alpine revenues. So, my question is, is that specifically related to daily ticket sales, day-to-day ticket sales? And I also feel like if we can, I know that that's not going to want to be just even avoided by a decent week. Why is to hold off on the front of our elevator, thinking the house will commit to work? It just, it makes me a little uncomfortable getting into a debt service expense that big, because too many time limits.
Yep.
So, anyway, that's just my view for 40,000 given on the issues and for discussion.
Right. I think that's important to understand, and we do, that whatever budget we approve is a guideline. And we're going to be monitoring on a very regular bi-weekly basis or twice-a-month basis, as we always do. If things start going south, though, for every reason, to Allison's point, and I would agree with her, I think that perhaps at some point in time, perhaps in the near future, that the town should come back to the Select Board with ideas on a scenario which could occur. So, we don't have to be planning at the last minute, unless you think we can put it together in a couple of weeks, Audra.
Well, okay, so I guess sort of the challenge we have right now is, for every other industry in Maine, there are those checklists that you need to adhere to for safe reopening, and it's going to be the same with the ski industry.
Right.
And Beth is very proactively involved in that group that's... So, the way that it's been working is that a lot of these sort of industry groups will put together the checklist and the guidelines for safe reopening, and then it goes to the CDC or the governors, you know, DCD or whoever, and they look over the guidelines that the industry has prepared, and then they make changes, recommended changes based on public health data and other, you know, other factors that they have around, you know, infection prevention and that sort of, that sort of thing. So, you know, we're kind of preparing, trying to prepare a reopening plan without the final word from the state on what they want to see. So, you know, we're kind of like in that stage where we're just taking a best guess at this point in time as to what a safe reopening plan should look like. So, that's one thing. And then, two, like you said, there's a lot of uncertainties around what's going to happen. And it's almost like because this operation is so front-loaded in terms of snowmaking, in terms of hiring staff to get the mountain and the facility prepared, and to get everyone trained and, you know, mobilized in order for the snowball to even open for the winter, let alone start operating. It's kind of... You know, I mean, unless we get a decision, like there's going to be another statewide lockdown in November before we, you know, kick off the season, we're kind of... I mean, it is, we are running a risk that we could prepare to open
Sure.
front-end, spend a lot of money, and then there's a statewide lockdown again, and we've spent all this money and there's no season.
Yeah, I don't think that...
That's a very real...
It is, and that's why I was putting that out as being, trying to comment on what is the most black scenario?
To me, that's the most black scenario.
And hopefully, hellishly unlikely, by the way, but that would be the most black scenario.
I think it's unlikely.
That would be really scurrying for the trees.
Well, and I mean, and I think that as a town, we're all aware, I mean, you know, this, we could have, we could have this happen in terms of weather not cooperating, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, I think as a town, we understand the risk of owning and operating a facility such as this. And I think everybody knows there's way more uncertainty this year than there is in any other...
In a scenario where the planet is warming by the year, that doesn't add to our luxury matters. But again, I think I see the budget as a guideline that we would be monitoring. But if any scenario turns blacker, then we have to be able to move quickly on whatever we can do. And I realize there are some things you cannot do. I think in general, Beth, I think you did a good job of attacking this thing. The only, I have a couple of comments on a couple, maybe just one item, but that's really trivial in the full context of the thing. Allison, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I guess so overall with the budget and looking at the, I support, I think I support taking out the groomer, I guess. I don't, I'm just not all by typically make that decision, honestly. But with the expense budget, with the Alpine, for example, to me, everything that I've ever seen is that Beth already presents a really conservative budget in terms of expenses. So, it makes me really nervous to see such huge cuts. To what to me looked like pretty significant cuts, and so I guess I would like to understand what that means for each, you know, each of those lines, like how are, how are we cutting on? That's, there are a lot of lines that are just a little bit less, and my instinct would be to not want to do that. Maybe I'll explain a little bit more.
Are you talking about revenue?
No, I'm talking about expenses.
If revenues go down, it's less. They didn't go up. The revenues, expenses went down, not up.
Bob, what I see is, I see the manager's expenses have gone down, both revenue and expenses. I'm curious about the differences, Audra brought in, from where Beth originally had with those changes.
I mean, really, it would, yeah.
Some way just ski school wages, terrain park wages, groomer wages, lift operations wages, and maintenance, repair and maintenance went down. I mean, we got from that, department head was 590 to 200, and then we're at 5493 for, this is just the Alpine, looking at the detailed version of the Alpine.
Yep.
Yeah, and quite honestly, the majority of it, you know, the majority of cuts would be in wages. So, you know, in a pessimistic year where, you know, we'd have to sort of cut expenses, it would be less man-hours for things like, you know, grooming and basically everything.
The full-time wages.
I just want to take us more time. We're going to need more man-hours to do the job. That's definitely one of the, mostly one of her, Beth, I guess. But to me, I just don't see how cutting a bunch of staff, like for hours, is going to bring about a better, I don't know.
I don't, no, I don't think it's better. This is, this is a pessimistic...
Well, it is, except for the town, the full-time wages went up by 5,000, it didn't go down. So, that one went up. So, there's more labor there. But the other ones, you're right, there's a couple of thousand on a bunch of lines that are, sounds like they're just sharpening the pencil.
That's pretty much what it is. We'd have, you know, we'd... We'd have, you know, we, we wouldn't be calling, um, as many people in for shifts to do things like, you know, run ski school, people doing ski patrol, all of the different components of what it takes to run the snowball. It would just be less staff hours going into-
Which is frankly commensurate with the reduction of revenue you showed on the other side, which is reflecting less ski school, less lessons and that kind of thing. So they kind of go hand in hand, as I-
But, but as Beth said, a lot of things are front-loaded, so I'd like, in terms of hiring people or, I don't, which, which things is the, I don't want them to be crippled by having a, a much smaller expense budget because they already see, this is where it always is, they're really careful about not spending money. A lot of the time you have to say, no, just like you, Bob, for example, with the vehicle maintenance and repair, that I, I thought we held strongly that that needed to be, you know, healthy and now that's getting brought back down. I understand they have more flexibility to move things from line to line, right? And to adjust depending on revenues? I don't know, I guess, I would love to, Beth probably knows, but at what point are we making the whole program suffer? Because we don't have the, if we've only pledged at the beginning here for, for so much less and so many expenses are front-loaded, then how can we adjust part rate better enough?
So you guys asked me to think of a scenario where, um, our revenues have a shortfall. So the best, the best way that I can explain what we would do if we were having those shortfalls is we would cut hours from the day, make it one shift for the staff, therefore we wouldn't have to have more than, you know, several different shifts coming in to cover the time. Um, this would lower payroll, electricity costs, et cetera. Um, we would obviously prioritize snowmaking, maybe we wouldn't spend as much time on Muscle Ridge if our race program isn't going to be a full race program this year.
Uh-huh.
Maybe, maybe we won't make as much snow for a couple of terrain park jumps and we'll prioritize the mountain for everyone this year. Um, that would also, uh, make grooming a little bit more efficient. They don't have to spend so much time on Muscle Ridge and so much time on the terrain park jumps. Um, if there's no fourth grade learner ski program because the schools are all, all have different opening plans, they all have different busing plans, um, then we're not going to have as many instructors to pay, um, and they're not going to be hanging out because we're not going to have the space for them if we have, um, inside restrictions.
Oh, actually, while you're on that, is there, do we have a, um, method for determining, are we prepared to do the fourth grade learner ski program if the, if the schools want to perform with it? Or?
So, so we did reach out, um, to Maria Levy and she, uh, has gotten in contact with the local elementary school, Chris Walker Spencer, principal. He was, he said all field trips are canceled this year, um, and, but he would consider the fourth graders coming to the snowball since it's the same community, um, but that's just our local schools. I haven't talked to any other schools and I don't know what their feelings would be on.
Okay. I guess, um, the, um, it seems to me that, again, this is a guideline and I, I really, I'm not overly concerned with our expenses if they had to go kind of closer back to what they were. I think there was probably, and I understand why, um, the feeling of pressure to make the revenue and expenses, you know,
Well, I mean, that's, that's kind of a part of a, we got to start the season with a balanced budget.
It, it, we could go try, um, but in this season, I think you got a special one and that may not occur.
But I, I mean, I do think that everybody is aware of the fact that, um, though for the purposes of, for accounting purposes,
Yep.
we have to start the season with a balanced budget. I think everybody's going into it pretty clear-eyed that, um, despite our best efforts, we might not end up there.
Yeah, uh, a good point. Yeah, I, I have to agree. It's, it's, but you, your individual opinions of what might happen this winter are just that.
Yes.
Um, and we're going to track the heck out of it, much more so with Jody's help and, and Beth, you too, uh, to determine how we're tracking to make, uh, help make appropriate plans to minimize, whatever we can minimize and that's all we can do effectively. Mark?
Uh, I think, you know, everyone's done a good job trying to prepare as best we can. I just have a couple of questions. Number one, um, if you had to run the snowball open and close the lodge entirely, um, is that possible, Beth?
It is. We talked about that scenario. Um, it, it would be tough on the kids, I would think, for warming reasons, um, but other than that, you know, we're, we're prepared to bring in porta-potties, we're prepared to bring in some, some more, um, fire pits, maybe propane heaters. We're, we're trying to think of any way that we can have little warming stations on the mountain.
Okay.
I think that's, I, I just wanted to say, I think that's great. Um, the one thing that's come out of the pandemic so far is that outside exercise, uh, sports action has been so important. You can't buy a bicycle right now, you can't buy a kayak. That's the one thing people can do and I think the ski in this winter is, we have an exceptional opportunity to provide a service for our citizens and citizens from all the towns around us because they're going to need it to do this. Um, so as long as we have contingencies, Beth, we're thinking about all those things, it's great. And then one other question I had, I'm going to take the groomer out of the budget. Um, do they lease groomers or is it own purchase situations? Somebody asked me that and I couldn't answer.
I believe you can lease to own.
Yeah.
Jody, Jody looked at the financing for the groomer and I'm not sure if any, anyone was offering a lease, but, uh-
You could lease to own.
Such a rare piece of equipment. I, it's just something somebody asked me and I, I thought I would ask.
Yep. Um, where do we go?
How I, I proposed it for financing, so it would be-
Is somebody speaking?
Jody.
Yeah, Jody.
Sorry?
Jody, can you, can you turn your volume up? We're very soft with the music.
She's on mute.
You're on mute now.
She's on mute.
She was actually so loud, she was going through the mute.
That's right. Jody can't hear you. Turn up your volume.
You keep going back to mute for some reason.
Yeah. No, nothing. Well, while, well, Jody's figuring that out. Um, [laughing] I think, um-
Oh, but I think what she's go, she's going to say is that when we originally started looking at, um, the groomer, she did look at financing options that included lease purchase.
I'm sure, it's very common.
Yeah, I mean, for the, I, more, more often than not, when we're purchasing a piece of equipment, it's through a lease purchase agreement.
Right. That's a usually what things about-
Is that akin to what you were going to say, Jody?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, [laughing] you're home now. Yes, that's exactly what we did.
Hey, you know, the only, um, bit of, uh, heartburn on the thing that I had was, um, just, because Beth, you answered a lot of great questions. Thank you, uh, for the good work. I, the, the snowmaking thing still bothers the heck out of me because the average of the last three years was a hundred thousand dollars and we're still plowing an eighty. Um, yeah, twenty thousand dollars, but, you know, if, um, but I don't, I agree. I don't mind having a balanced budget. If we were to, if we were to affect the snowmaking electricity, which I think we should, we should probably be a little bit more aggressive on some of the, on some of the revenue items like toboggan nationals. If the toboggan nationals can go up a little bit, we could balance that. But if you don't want to, I get it, but it's, I find it very difficult to believe we'll be having a winter where we don't spend in six, low six digits in electricity. But that's, that's the only way I do my suck. This is all highly judgmental, highly, you know, it's, it's a tool to manage what will transpire over the next probably four months, what we'll know. Mark?
Bob, I have a-
Uh, Taylor.
Go ahead, Taylor.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say, kind of reiterating, I think you're getting too bothered. Um, for me personally, I can't, I feel more comfortable having a budget starting conservative side, given all the unknowns. And then if we have to adjust things mid-season, as a guideline was pointed out, can we do that? I just confirmed to Jody, we have a fifty thousand dollar reserve, snowball on the town side.
Correct.
And then we also have our two hundred and twenty thousand plus, um, select work contingency fund, um, that we can tap into for whatever we might need to, and hopefully we won't need to, but, um, you know, I feel like, I feel like we have some padding, but I was more comfortable going with the town manager's, uh, budget and entering the winter thinking conservative.
Yep. I, I agree.
Do you think conservatively, revenue-wise, or conservative?
Oh, they should, they should both be-
Well, it, it both. I mean, if you look at, if you look at both, the biggest, the big cuts between the, the department head and the, and the town manager are in the Alpine line on both expenses and revenue.
I would, um, I would suggest, Audra, that perhaps the town manager's budget would be more comfortable if we, uh, increased revenue somehow, but to the nine hundred and twenty thousand, four fifty-two and, uh, I'm sorry, nine hundred, twenty thousand, five hundred, and the expenses by increasing electricity for making snow to nine twenty, four fifty-two. It's, it's almost, I just can't believe that we're not going to be spending more money electricity for making snow. That, that seems like a, and I'm, I don't agree with raising the revenue, but what the heck? Where this is a, this is the target.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that would be my suggestion. Beth?
Don't forget, we have a new crew.
Electricity for making snow, nine twenty, four fifty-two.
Oh, no.
It's, it's almost, I just can't believe that we're not expecting someone with their-
We're getting feedback.
That's just-
I, Stephanie.
Raising the revenue.
Can somebody mute Stephanie?
Um-
What do you need to turn off? You do it.
Um, uh, sorry.
Stephanie, who is Stephanie?
Janice, would you mute that, please? Thank you. Thank you, I didn't know what that was. I don't, I hate listening to myself. [laughing]
That was weird. Uh, what I was going to say is, don't forget, we've got a little bit of reorganization over in the Alpine,
Uh-huh.
personnel and we've got a new team over there and they may have a few different priorities than the last management, so.
Well, that reduced the electricity line item?
I think so. I think so.
All right.
Can you talk a little bit about that? I bet that'll be, that's a good question.
Um, well, like I said earlier, um, I think the, the last mountain manager was very, um, very much a perfectionist, um, and really enjoyed, um, the big jumps and a lot of the things that we might be able to scale down a little bit, which will, which will take less snow.
Okay.
And less electricity.
Okay.
And more disappointment for people that liked those things.
Yeah, right, of course.
Not necessarily. Remember what the, how many, what's the percentage that can hit those jumps? I mean, if you think about that versus the general skier.
Good point, good point.
Um, I think some people do, I, yeah.
Well, it seems to me we're at a point where this sounds like the town manager's recommendation is what I'm hearing to everybody, to the select board.
And I, I think, you know, something to keep in mind is that, like we said, we, this is just a starting place
Yep.
and, you know, I, I would imagine that if there's any, there's, not even, I would imagine, I'll commit to if there's any changes, if there's anything that we're noticing, like maybe, you know, um, we get to a point where, you know, within the snowmaking, it looks like we are gonna, we are going to be spending a hundred thousand dollars on electricity, given, you know, given the, um, the weather for this season, because that can impact the amount of money that we end up spending on snowmaking. If we don't get that, that sort of like cold snap in December that, that is really fortuitous for us to make a lot of snow at once and it has to sort of trickle out like it did last year into January, um, you know, there could be a number of things that we start to notice that, um, we need to come back to you and give you an update and maybe ask for a budget adjustment.
Okay.
Something like that. And, and that's not sort of the normal process, but I think given the high level of uncertainty that we have going into this year, which is exceptional,
I'd agree.
that's something that we can commit to.
I'd agree. I think the tenor of what you're doing, you did remove the groomer, that was a bit of a risk factor long-term, um, and I think that, yeah, we, we can, I think, we could work that. We have to adjust as we go forward and we have to move quickly on a bi-weekly basis.
And I think similarly, um, you know, the select board can be a much better, um, conduit for feedback from the community and if you're hearing anything, you can always come to us and say, we're getting a lot of complaints because the jumps aren't big enough on the terrain park and we want you to be for snow. You know, like there's a lot of, this is very back and forth and I think that all of us are sort of open-
We're going to hear what you say.
[laughing]
Why don't we, uh, can I get a motion then from the, from the, Mark, or who? Yep.
I, I think a motion to be approved, the, the man, town managers are left for the snow.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, aye also. Thank you very much. Um, uh, is there any more discussion, any more discussion about the snowball reopening plan as published, uh, on the agenda and the packet? I read, Beth, I'm, Beth, just a small, silly little comment. It talks about needing masks and, and one part talks about needing masks to ski and the other part talks about needing them when you're in the lift line, when you're mounting and dismounting the chair, but when you're skiing around the chair, you don't have to wear masks. Is that the intent?
Well, I think, I think if you, um, this, again, this is a work progress, um, that might've, we might've looked over that, but I think, I think skiers and snowboulders tend to wear gaiters or some kind of face covering to stay warm. Uh, maybe during spring skiing, we may have to remind folks about wearing masks while skiing or something. I'm not sure what that looks like yet.
Okay.
But if you're just skiing on your own and there's no one else on the trail that you're on and you want your mouth open, as your mouth open, I guess.
Okay. All right, no biggie. Any other comments?
First possibility is-
Allison?
Um, yeah, I mean, I thought it was a, I thought it was a great start. Um, I, I do think it's going to be similar to what schools are, are going through, which is going to be-
Yep.
Basically like we're running a school and, uh, that there's going to be a lot of stuff, like just trying to get parents, a lot of that law is just taken up by parents sitting around waiting for their kids. Um, how, you know, what's that going to look like? Are there different ways for parents to make to feel comfortable just meeting their kids? Um, and, you know, is that even the goal? Is there additional staffing that could happen to kind of be more of like a watch out for kids' safety so that parents don't, you know, need to sit in the lodge or just? I, I bet there's just, I, I'm watching what the school board is, is going through, um, even with a really kind of fabulous job that they've done, I would say. Um, I bet we're going to get a lot of, I worry that we may need more staffing just to kind of help the public relations and the answering questions and I can see staff getting totally overrun and even us too with questions of like, my kid was getting their boots fitted and, you know, the boot fitting person got too close or do we have to? They're just getting-
Yep, yep.
See, I think there's going to be a lot and I think we should be prepared to use like select work contingency or other kinds of, um, funding sources to try to help out with just the communication and education part of that. I, I don't think that.
Holly?
Yeah, I was just saying that in the mind about lodge, because of this spare footage, we need to have an opening plan. We can only have fifteen-
Holly, you're, Holly, you're breaking up. Holly, you're breaking up.
I can hear, uh, the, 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 you guys, you can hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I was just saying, if you look at the, at the plan, because of the spare footage of the main upstairs of the lodge, we can only have fifteen people in there, uh, by the current guideline, which is five people per one thousand square feet. Um, and that at six, with six tables, that's, you know, two people per table, that's it. But there's not going to be any socializing and waiting around inside. We, we've heard from a lot of, you know, a lot of parents we've talked to that have said, well, it's just going to be changing your car, get ready, get, take a lot of the, as soon as you arrive. There's not going to be the high, you know, that the kids hang out in the lodge, um, for hours on end. It's not going to be any air or an atmosphere for that. Um, it's just going to be true skiing, which is great and that's going to be the safest thing to do anyways. Um, so, uh, and yet, and the other thing I thought is that we've got a lot of time until this actually starts. We don't, we don't hysterically open until the, um, middle of December at the earliest and a lot of things could happen between now and then, um, and the schools are going to be a really great testing ground for that. great testing ground for that beginning in the next two weeks in the first month, so.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Holly. Mark?
I was just gonna say, I think trying to prepare for the unknown, this is as good as you can get. I think there's a lot of thought, thoughtfulness in it, and covers a lot of ground, and, you know, it covers what we know right now, and, you know, we can adjust, you know, I think they've done a great job adjusting this budget, this opening plan, and the meeting after a week's, but I can see all the work that's been put into it, and I'm pretty happy with it, because we don't know, and I think this is as good a start as you can get.
Yep.
So thank you, Beth, thank you, Holly, thank you, I'd refer all the...
Yeah, thank you all. I agree with Mark very much. With that, we'll move on to our sixth item on our agenda, which is an update on established priorities, and just as an intro here, we had a priorities workshop last week?
Yes.
Wow, time goes by fast. Last week, and these items that are on the agenda, basically, the, the housing and infrastructure with its subbullets was added to the, to the priorities of the select board in the town for fiscal year 21. The complete list is in the packet with the original items, but Audra, maybe you want to lead into discussion here on these items that we have added in the priority list this year?
Yes, so this, I think this is just a good opportunity to, you know, talk about these additional items that the select board put on the, the sort of priorities list for the upcoming year. Neither of these are new priorities, they're things that you've been working on for a few years now, because as a group, you've been together for a while. So to remind everyone, in terms of housing, the, the sort of low-hanging fruit that we worked on last year and that's passed was the accessory dwelling, the changes to the zoning ordinance that allowed for accessory dwelling units in all zones, and as we were sort of discussing, you know, what, what area are we gonna tackle in terms of changes that can be made to help with the availability and improvements to housing affordability? There are a number of different things that were discussed, you know, short-term rentals and how that's regulated, and the impact they're having on year-round rentals and their availability, and just housing stock and its affordability generally has been discussed. Incentivizing year-round rentals is something that the select board has discussed, and always sort of coming back to that conversation around increase, you know, what are the different opportunities for increasing density or housing units within, you know, the, the sort of village areas or areas that are already developed, and, you know, small lot development and that, that sort of thing. So, you know, I, and this is really just for the benefit of anybody who wasn't at the workshop. The sort of clear direction that, that myself and the staff seemed to get from the select board was that you wanted more data to try to really figure out what the issues are so you can really target your approach to how we're going to.
Yes.
And, and what we're going to prioritize of these different sort of issues that have an impact on housing affordability and availability. And, you know, luckily, there's a few different data sources. I know that Mount Desert Island recently did a study on housing, and they have some similar issues to Camden, so I think that some of the methodology behind that is something that we can easily sort of emulate. Main State Housing has really good data, so I think, and also, we, we received some data from, I think, I forget what the company's called now, but it was formerly STR Helper that had really good information on exactly how many short-term rental units are in Camden. So there's a number of different data sources that we can pull for, pull from and compile into a report using a similar methodology to a few other compute, communities with comparable issues to us. So that's, I think, you know, it seemed like the direction you wanted us to go, and that's how we're going to approach it, and then come back to you with all that information so that you have more to look at in terms of figuring out which issues you're gonna zero in as priorities to start really digging into.
Perfect. Perfect. Now, I know, if you finish with this housing one, I know Stephanie wanted to speak to this item, so Stephanie, you have, you have 10 seconds. No, I'm kidding.
Well, I, I am on board of the Knox County Homeless Coalition, so on behalf of our organization, I want to thank you for having this as an item we're focusing on, and what we are hearing is that real estate is selling fast in our area, and that makes prices go up, and anything that can be done to address affordability and also behind the board, because poor locals want minimum wage workers, I mean, that's like one of the challenges, because we all have a different definition of what poor local housing is. So anything we can do at the Homeless Coalition, partner with you all, if you want.
Greg, Steph, Greg, Stephanie, thanks so much for taking the time out. Good to see you again.
Yeah, it's great. It's an important issue, and I hope you can...
Yeah, we, we, we agree. Rather meaty issue, but we need to dig into the meat.
Not just the COVID issue, but...
No, no, you're right about the real estate thing, it's, it's gone quite crazy.
Yeah.
Anyway, Audra, do you want to address the second item then on infrastructure?
Yeah, so, again, also an item that's, that's really not, not new, so we've been talking about it for a few years now. So really, in, in terms of infrastructure, I think some of the, the issues that have really come to the surface are discussions on complete streets, so, you know, we, we all know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done to maintain our road infrastructure, but a lot of, you know, a lot of the things that we need to be addressing are also how do we make our streets more accessible to pedestrians and cyclists and other modes of transportation other than just vehicles? So looking at opportunities where we can when we're, you know, planning to redo a street to make sure that we have, you know, complete streets policy and that we're creating connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists, and trying to figure out what are, you know, what are the areas that are real opportunities and priorities and are gonna give us the best sort of bang for our buck in terms of having that contiguous pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure? So stormwater and drainage, oh, and to, for the, the complete streets, one reason why that's a huge priority for this year is that voters did approve, you know, a lot of funds in terms of engineering and design work. So it's really gonna give us that opportunity to figure out exactly where and what we want to do. The second thing is stormwater and drainage infrastructure. That's going to be a multi-year project in figuring out what we have, where it is, the condition of it, and then opportunities for doing things a little bit different so we can also address some water quality issues as well as just handling stormwater a little bit differently than we have in the past when the goal was to get it into the system and send it out into the harbor as quickly as possible. I think everybody understands that, you know, in the past, that was the preferred method for dealing with stormwater, but that's not, that is not best practice anymore. So what, what do we have? Where is it? What is it doing? How is it functioning? And what are our opportunities for things like, you know, impoundment, you know, retention, you know, filtering, you know, into, you know, all those sorts of sort of green infrastructure?
Retention.
Yeah, just sort of best practice in, in terms of stormwater management. We, we live in a really challenging town in terms of stormwater, because mountains meeting the sea, it's a very small area to, you know, be able to achieve a lot of these things, but I, you know, we can certainly do better than what we're doing now, and this is just the first stage in figuring out what we have, where it is, and, and what our plans are gonna be for the future. Parks, I think that, you know, everybody's aware, we've got a great network of parks within town and a lot of opportunities for different amenities and a lot that we need to do to maintain them, so just having a more comprehensive idea of, you know, what are parks, how they can function so that they can better meet the needs of our community, and, you know, I, I personally think that we have a lot of opportunities for some good, you know, connectivity in terms of, you know, corridors of open space, and how do we work with groups like the Land Trust to achieve some of those, you know, bigger goals in terms of connectivity of open space? And then parking is something that we discussed, and looking at the downtown and availability of parking and the opportunity for potentially using paid parking to better manage what we have and incentivizing, you know, people who work in the downtown and people who live in town to walk and use some of the parking areas that are a little bit further out of the downtown and just, just better, like more rational system for how our parking works.
Perfect. Perfect. That's great. I'd have to...
I have a question for Audra.
Go ahead, Taylor.
On the, on streets and sidewalks, do Dave and, and Rick have a, a working document for what the plan is on streets and sidewalks, how it stands now in terms of an operating timeline?
They, they do have, you know, with the RSMS system, it's more of the condition of the roads. They have been sending members of Public Works Department around to also survey the conditions of sidewalks. So really, I, you know, that's another workshop that we're gonna have to have with the select board, and I, I think we should look for other ways to get feedback as well, which we can talk about later. But before we sort of start spending money on engineering, I think it's really important that we're all pretty clear on what the priorities are, because, you know, there's a, there's a lot of different opportunities, and I think it's gonna be really important for us to understand what the priorities are, and we're really gonna need your help with doing that before we sort of get too into detail on any engineering work.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. That's actually prior to exactly what I was asking. The, I think once their initial, their evaluation of conditions, it would be helpful to sort of see what, where that all stands, we've got a broad layer of, or the conditions that everything are, just as a starting point. That's all.
Yeah, and I, I think an important group to bring into this conversation will be Pathways, because they've been doing a lot of great work on this for a long time.
Yeah, very true.
Great.
Good stuff. Great, great priorities list, lots, lots, lots of work in all of them, but lots of fun too, right? It's a very comprehensive priorities list, I think that we put together last Wednesday it was, a week ago, or last week. Perfect. On the discussion items, well, we have Jody here, so, Jody, you want, you already gave us a little mini-report on the financials, and what you saw is some of the highlights that was in our packet, like excise taxes and that kind of, is there any other comments you, you would like to make for the board?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Not really beyond what was in your exception report, we're moving along nicely. There's an uptick in interest because of, because of the delay in the, I think it was July 16th, property taxes. So that's a little higher than normal, but other than that, we're, we should be about seventeen percent here, and as you can look down through, or mainly looking through revenues, you're above that.
Yeah. Yeah. Were the, were the, were the lien notices on property taxes at a normal percentage so far?
We set out almost three hundred thirty-day notices back on July 20th, and we were able to collect two-thirds of those, so we, we doubled on, I think it was like ninety-six properties.
Is that a...
How's that compared to usual?
I think it's about average. I don't have the exact numbers, and I can certainly get that rate noticed, but we usually have a pretty good collection rate when remaining leases still out.
Okay. Yep. No, again, it's only, it's only for the July and August, correct, Jody? It's a...
Yes.
One-sixth of the year, so we're gonna get a better track probably as we get into November, and we start seeing the next collection of taxes and et cetera, et cetera.
Why don't we get an idea of what state revenue sharing is gonna look like?
We, we already have a pretty good idea of it, and, so I think that this year, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for revenue sharing. Again, very, very pessimistic, and the last projection that the state released, it was looking like we were going to receive about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand in revenue sharing, so I think that's one area where we'll definitely be above what we budgeted.
That helps.
Okay.
So that's a good, yeah, that's a good cushion sort of going into this financial year of high levels of uncertainty.
That's great. Three sixty?
Three sixty-seven. Am I, is that right, Jody?
Three sixty-seven, yes.
Oh, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. That's great. In general, everything looked great, Jody, everything, all the, all the budget line items looked fine. I, I certainly didn't see anything of any other select member having any comments or questions for Jody on the financials for the two months? Nope? Okay. Then we'll proceed to updates by us all, which would, Audra, would you like to start?
Yeah, so...
She has a smile on her face.
I really, I, I didn't include this in the packet, but I, I certainly will, and I'll send a copy of it around to everyone. So I have, I have gone down the rabbit hole in terms of utility poles this summer, because I, it just, it ended up perplexing me as to how much of a no-man's land it is when you ask the utility companies to fix something, and this, a, a lot of it started because Eric, of Eric's Barber Shop down the street, him and his wife both came in to complain about the pole that's right in front of their property. There, there was a wire hanging off the pole into the travel lane, and every single time a truck that was large enough passed through, it would smack onto this wire that was sort of hanging into the road, and, you know, it was just very concerning for them and very irritating for them, and as I walked every day to work, I became equally irritated and concerned. And on that same pole, there was wire wrapped around the outside of it, just sort of dangling into the, into the sidewalk where, you know, anybody was walking by could have got caught on it, and, you know, just, there's, I think that if you start paying attention when you're walking around town, you get more and more irritated by the condition of utility poles that are in our public rights of way, and where they're located, and Dave St. Laurent, Laurent got equally irritated by a pole that was recently replaced on Elm Street, and they just left the old pole there, they plopped the new one directly in the middle of the sidewalk, and then they left the...
Spoils.
Debris and the spoils all around the base of it, and they were like, no, that, we just leave it there, because, you know, when we come and take the old one out, we might need to use those spoils to fill in the hole. And we asked, well, when are you gonna come and replace the, the, or take the old one out? Oh, we don't have that scheduled anytime soon. So it could be there for months, if not years. So then our Public Works Department just had to come by and, and remove it, because there literally was no place to walk between the big pile of spoils, the old pole and the new pole. So, you know, just these, these sort of like irritations mounted up to the point where trying to figure out what to do, try to work with consolidated CMP, all the different entities that own poles, have attachments on the poles, you kind of find out it's this no-man's land where no one's really responsible, and no one is going to help you very quickly, and everybody points to everybody else as the person who's to blame for you not getting your issue addressed quickly. So that kind of led me to, down a number of alleys, the final one being the legislature passed a law saying that they wanted a report from the PUC on abandoned utility poles, and the PUC opened up rulemaking into, or a notice of inquiry that could lead to rulemaking around abandoned utility poles. And as luck would have it, I had until last Friday to file a comment with the PUC as part of their notice of inquiry process. So I reached out to a number of other mid-coast towns that we had been working with on streetlights and a few other things, and I got all of them, which was us, Rockport, Rockland, Thomaston, South Thomaston... South Thomiston, and Union, to join us in the filing, as well as Owl's Head and Hope.
Okay.
So, we've all participated in this filing, we've all put in a number of comments saying things like, we agreed with the utility companies that wanted a one-touch make-ready policy, which basically means each company with an attachment to a pole doesn't have to get an individual contractor to come in and move their infrastructure, it can be one contractor that does it all, there's some sort of statewide notification system if they're going to transfer services from an old pole to a new pole. And the one thing that I highly disagreed with the utilities on was that they didn't think they needed to pay any sort of financial penalty, or they shouldn't be obligated to pay a financial penalty for just leaving abandoned poles there for an indefinite period of time. We all said that we very much think there needs to be a timeframe for when old poles are removed, and then they incur a financial penalty if they don't remove them after that. I said that in addition to looking at that, they need to give municipalities the ability to cite where new poles are located in the public right-of-way, so we don't have things like poles being plopped in the middle of the sidewalk where they could be moved three feet in one direction and still be in the right-of-way. And, you know, a number of other comments to that, the same thing with any debris from the process of removing an old pole. So, there's a number of things that were included in that filing, I'm going to share it with all of you.
Great.
I'll put it in the packet, we'll put it on the website.
Great.
And we'll see where it goes.
Thanks. Anything else, Audrey?
So, that's my big one for...
Good. Allison, how about you?
Oh, yes. Okay, let me, so, just a little bit of update from municipal stuff. Cemetery committee has been working very, very hard. They've been having actually five-weekly meetings to talk about using some of the funds that have been accumulating in the cemetery trust funds to kind of chip away at a lot of maintenance that needs to happen there. So, that's, they've been really busy doing a great job. The time cap sold deadline has been extended just a few times, but that is mostly because the outpouring from the community has been really exciting. It's actually taken a fair amount of work to answer questions and stuff about it, but we've got a lot of really, really cool submissions. We just had a group of middle school kids paint the time cap, sell, we've had sealed letters and baseball caps and poems and all kinds of letter ideas. So, that, I think, if all goes according to plan, we're going to try to get that on Thursday. There's still just a little bit kind of sleek submissions in. We had a great little mini-workshop today of wastewater treatment plant. I don't know if you were planning on talking about that, Bob, but I personally was encouraged with some of the discussion about ways to, even though it's a little bit outside of the scope of work of what's happening with the plants, changes themselves, trying to use this as an opportunity to, to, into public to access just a little bit, make sure that we're not closing any doors to the Riverwalk. As, I get a lot of questions from people wondering why the Riverwalk goes by the State Park, or the former State Park, just dead ends as soon as it gets to town property, and so I appreciated that Bolshrich and Red Pierce and Audrey and the team are thinking about that, it seems like we made some progress. The microsolid waste board of directors voted to move forward with negotiations for a three-year contract with Crossroads Land Bill in Norwich Walk. We're coming to the end of our contract with Efe May, or will be coming to the end of that contract, and unfortunately, it's just a really challenging time to be entering into a new long-term contract. So, our thought is that we're going to try to just do a really short-term contract, like three years with the landfill, is definitely not like the best option that we would normally pursue, and I anticipate that we're probably going to have questions from residents about, you know, why are we going from a waste energy facility to now a site where it's really just straight landfill? And anybody who's interested in kind of delving into that, we can get into the details of why we felt that that was sort of our only best option at this point, but the hope is that we could also, we're going to be saving a fair amount of money by doing this, and so the thought is that we might take some of this money that we're saving and use it to fund some of our own education programs that take the place of what Efe May was offering. I don't think it was being used all that much by our schools, but a little bit. So, that's going to be something sort of coming down the pipe that we'll be talking about more maybe at some point. This isn't something that actually needs to go to the select board, so it's because it's a relatively short-term contract, it can't just be done by the municipal resport. So, it's not going to, we're not at the stage where we're going to be doing that whole town meeting thing like we did before with Iver and Efe May. And then on the transfer station front, we are fully back to, you know, full operations in terms of everything that we accept, so even the Scrap Dogs Community Composting Program is back up and running again, so you can take, I know a lot of people do the bucket system where they pay the subscription fee, but the other option is also available again, where you can just for free take your own bucket and dump that in at the transfer station. And we're going to be trying to, trying to increase that also, because as we're moving up, an option for waste disposal that is for what we would call lower down on the state's waste hierarchy, we want to be also increasing the amount of diversion that we have from the waste stream. And last but not least, town staff did a heroic job, I think, of moving the skate park as much as they could. There was a great group of, mostly the Parks and Rec Department, and then some public works also, and a group of parent and feeding volunteers. It was really, it's unfortunate the condition that it's in, it was really hard to get it apart. All of the decisions about what to try to preserve and what not to, that was all done with a bunch of the kids and parents that used the skate park, so it was good to see that there's really widespread agreement between both public works and Parks and Rec and the town staff that were helping to move it, and also the people that use it. So, a lot of that did have to be wrapped, but a lot of it's also been moved over to that Nolan Street parking lot, and the idea there is that it can be used kind of as a staging area at this point to try to recreate the path type, and there's a group of community members coming up with a fundraising plan and kind of a plan for what needs to happen with those items, so.
Good.
Any questions about that? So, that's it.
Thanks, Allison. Marco?
I'm in shock, everybody, to say, I really don't have anything to say. I'm actually on vacation, I'm sitting in the business center at Gold Bell, in Maine, I haven't left Maine, and my wife and son would be amazed that I should be back to see them fairly quickly.
We'll go for a long walk.
One other thing I'll say, I'm very, this skate park is, is really great, it's a big support for us on that. That's it.
Thank you. Taylor?
Also on any vacation within the state, just farther up north, as far as I can get, I don't have anything tonight, but I was going to say the same thing about the skate park specifically, that I was just really encouraged and pleased with how quickly that process came together, starting from, you know, from public concern and outcry, and the voices all came together in a great way, and to cut through any bureaucratic red tape that might have been an issue, and just made it happen, and I was really happy with the way it turned out. Obviously, there's a little bit of a road ahead, I have no doubt that the amount of public support is something I guess that has been brought out better than what the poll.
Thank you, Taylor. Ms. Jenna?
I have one special thing. I have the privilege of sitting in as liaison of the library's recent meeting, and I still heard people who buy bricks for $250, the library can really use it right now. They have a number of bricks left, they sold a number of bricks, but by looking into the brick buying program and continue to support the library, they, they're doing a great job, there's early margins to get through COVID, there's a lot of limitations, and I'm really impressed with where they're going. So, I think looking into any way that we're capable of supporting the library, either as individuals, or even as a community, and further discussion, I just feel is really important. And also, I would like to commend the town staff on the movement of the skate park, and also the volunteers that really helped out and the organizers. So, thank you to all of them.
Cool, Jenna, thank you very much. From my side, just to elaborate a little bit on what Allison already mentioned about the wastewater project, they did tell us today that they're going to the planning board this week with their completed design package, and they're going up to bids this month for return of bids in October, as I recall.
Over 22nd.
In the possible start in the fall/winter of the 2021 season, so that's exciting. We'll see how the, how the construction market looks when they bid a wastewater plant. Jeremy, just a quick?
Yeah, just one, couple things really quick, Bob, about the planning board meeting. That meeting's at 5:00. We are taking comments, so if people have comments or just things they'd like to say, it is a public hearing, obviously, but they can email those to me. Likely, the planning board meeting will continue the following week, so we can just make sure we're getting a public comment on that, and wanted to say that. And Jenna mentioned that about the library, I will say, we had the outdoor film festival was held there on the 20th, which was fantastic, it was a socially-distanced event, it was really neat, everyone loved it, it was a fundraiser for the library, they let us use that facility, we are sending them a check for moth is for $625, so just wanted to let everyone know that, it's a great thing that the community did, so.
Thank you, Jeremy.
That's your turn, Amy.
Thank you, bud. Appreciate it very much. With that, the end of our select board agenda, I should have mentioned at the outset of the meeting that we will not be having this executive session this night, tonight, that will be tabled for a date uncertain at the moment. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn this on board and go back to bidding.
I will second that, to not go back to bidding. It's going to be good.
Yeah, it seems, discussion is, a lot of our select board members are taking vacation, glad to hear it. Anyway, with that, a roll call vote, Taylor? Taylor?
Vacation.
All right, go on vacation. Roll call, roll call vote.
Go on.
Yes. Jenna?
I'm not, I was joking.
Jenna, Jenna, do you approve of...
I, I, yeah.
Allison, Allison? Allison?
Um, yes, I'm still feeling pretty chatty.
Mark, Mark?
I.
And Bob also. Thank you so much, now go enjoy your evening, whatever is remaining of it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.